Hello. Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off all cell phones during this commission meeting. The meetings are televised every day on Channel Two and is also shown on our website. So to begin, we have some proclamations and a presentation.
I want to do the pledge.
Oh, sorry. Let's call meeting to order. It was on my mind here. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, equal to the visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item, Vietnam Veterans Day. No? Are you to represent any veterans?
Well, I am for the...
The other presentation.
Do whatever you need to do.
Okay. All right, that's fine. You can come up here if you'd like. Okay, whereas members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role to the government of the Republic of South Vietnam in 1969 and in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam. And whereas by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 US troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 543,000 troops. And whereas on January 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of all United States prisoners of war held on North Vietnam and the withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. And whereas, Welcome Home Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Day is an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in South Vietnam and throughout Southeast Asia during the Vietnam War. Now therefore be it resolved that the Leavenworth City Commission of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby designate March 29, 2017 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Second item on the agenda is... I have here? No, ma'am. Okay, libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and trusted institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel effort to better their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas libraries work to serve all community members, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the City, Leavenworth City Commission of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby designates April 9 to 15, 2017 as National Library Week. Would you like to say a few words before?
Thank you very much Mayor Bodder and city commissioners for allowing us to visit you tonight and have this proclamation proclaimed by the mayor. We do have some events, of course, scheduled for National Library Week, and we'd like to invite everyone to join us on Monday, April 10th, for a program called "Lend Me Your Ear," which is designed to make us all better listeners. On Thursday, the 14th, we have a book night where the writer's going to lead it, or a professor's going to lead a discussion about a book called "I'm a Stranger Here Myself." And on April 15th, Saturday, the gentleman who plays Casey Wolf is going to come and discuss his book called "Wolves Can't Fly," which describes his struggle to overcome an injury he sustained while trying to pull off a trick in his wolf costume, and what it took for him to get back on his feet and get his health restored and back into the costume. So, thank you again very much, and I hope to see you at the library.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation. VFW Post 56 for adopting VA Park.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Good evening. I always get a little bit of bounce in my step when I'm rounding up volunteers. We're here to take volunteers to help clean up parks. We're here tonight to acknowledge the VFW Post 56. They have requested to adopt VA Park, which is the grounds that lead into the north entrance to the VA. Most people kind of think of it as where the dog park area is, but there's a lot more to that. There's actually close to 90 acres there that we take care of, the city boards just take care of. So with that, and by the way, that'll make the 15th place area in City of Leavenworth that's been adopted, so I wanted to let you know that. And I'd like to invite the commander of Post 56, Steve Davis, to come forward and be recognized for this adoption.
Well, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to adopt one of your parks. The VA Park seems very appropriate for the VFW to adopt, and we're honored to do that. We'll do our best to keep that park in the best condition possible along with your great staff from Parks and Recreation, and we'll continue to work closely with community activities. Our primary purpose is advocacy for veterans throughout our community, but we want to be a good community partner as well. So we're more than honored to participate across the breadth of Leavenworth in making this a better place to live and work, and giving all our community members and veterans a great place to relax in. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to unveil the sign that will be erected in the park that are showing this evidence.
Onto old business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve March 14, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, to approve the minutes of the March 14 meeting. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 It's three to zero. Second consideration ordinances is the next item on the agenda. Second consideration ordinance, 8035, to remove certain property from downtown square, Town Square, redevelopment district.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, as a reminder, this is a motion to move seven addresses owned by Jeremy Greenemeyer out of the downtown Town Square Tiff. And then at the April 11th meeting, we will bring in action to put them back in the NRA. Those are two separate measures. We have to notify, put the school board and the county, which we will do. There's been no changes since first consideration ordinance, and the item is for your final approval here tonight. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay, we've already studied the issues. Are there any questions or concerns about this?
No.
If not, can I entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to...
This is a...
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a roll call, isn't it?
Roll call. So begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business, citizen participation. At this time, if there are any items that are not listed on the agenda and anyone would like to speak to us, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on. General items. Next item is to consider a cereal malt beverage license for the 2017 Main Street programs at Haymarket Square.
Carla Williams and her city clerk will handle this item.
Yes, this item is a request from Leavenworth Main Street for a cereal malt beverage license for the events that they hold at Haymarket Square during 2017. This would be an on-premise license, and if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. I believe Wendy is here, if you would have any questions of her as well.
You have any questions of Wendy or your staff?
No.
If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 It's three to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public hearing, creation of a community improvement district for City Hotel.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is the continuation of a process to create a community improvement district within the First City Hotel Community Improvement District, commonly known as the Second Ferguson Hotel, which would also include the First Ferguson Hotel. The estimated...
Could we open the special meeting?
No, please open the special meeting, I'm sorry.
Sorry, okay.
Or open the public hearing.
Okay, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay, now we're in the meeting.
The estimated cost of the project is $12.183 million, and as you'll see from the background, this process started in February with a petition filed and signed by Ferguson Hotel Development and the city clerk proposing the creation of the community improvement district. We've gone through the steps to this point, which leads us to tonight, which is the public hearing and then the adoption of the first consideration ordinance. We do have Jeff Sharp from Ferguson Properties and Councilor Court Maxwell from also representing Ferguson, if you have any questions about the project.
Okay. Do you have any questions? I don't either. If nothing else, then we'll go ahead and close...
Any public comment?
Oh, any public comments in regard to this hotel?
No.
No? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 Okay, now the first consideration ordinance for City Hotel Community Improvement District.
That's a consensus.
Agreement. Oh, that's a consensus. Is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consider the 2017 federal legislative program.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, at the March 21st study session, I presented the 2017 federal legislative program. It's before you tonight for final approval. There have been no changes. I won't go through the whole project again, but as a quick reminder to the public, we represent our federal agencies, our federal partners, Fort Leavenworth, the USP, and the Dwyer DA's and Howard Veterans Affairs Medical Center, to our delegation in Washington, as well as bringing a number of priority items to their attention. If there are any questions on the federal legislative program, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Can we get a motion to approve the...
I move that we consider the 2017 federal legislation program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Pass three to zero. Next item on the agenda, mayor's appointments to the Leavenworth Preservation Commission. I recommend the following appointments to reappoint Stephen Hanson, John Karasch, and Edward Otto to terms ending for 15, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 Pass three to zero. Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider Airbnb transient guest tax agreement.
This issue is to consider agreement with Airbnb Incorporated for the collection of transient guest tax. Staff along with the city attorney has been in contact with Airbnb to enter into a voluntary collection agreement for the collection of transient guest tax by Airbnb for their internet-based platform by which third-party their hosts offer accommodations. Earlier in the year, the state of Kansas entered into the same agreement to collect transient guest tax. Since the city has chartered out of the collection of the transit guest tax through the state process, we collect that directly ourselves. We had, it was necessary for us to do an agreement separate from the state to do that. So the agreement is before you. If it's approved, the collection would begin May 1, 2017. Our current transit guest rate is 8 percent.
Do you have any questions? Any concerns or questions in regard to this?
No.
At least I'm just repeating what the state is already doing.
Yep.
If not, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the Airbnb guest tax as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 Pass three to zero. Next item on the agenda, memorandum of understanding with the Kansas Gas for Three Mile Creek Bank stabilization design project.
Mike McDonald, our public director, will handle this item. Undo my machine here. Thanks, David. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is related to Three Mile Creek in the downtown area, particularly between Esplanade and Second Street. This is an area that's shown in the pictures here, identifying that the bank has been eroding considerably since the trail was constructed, since the parking lot was constructed. The property that the parking lot is constructed on was originally a coal gasification plant. Ultimately, it's currently owned by One Gas, who's delegated responsibility for dealing with this particular issue to Kansas Gas Service. City has had an interest in this property since the early 90s, when we constructed Leavenworth Landing Park. We've since built the trail. We have constructed a parking lot. The city noticed aggressive erosion and degradation of the site beginning particularly after the large rainfall event in July 5th or 6th of 2015, and it never stopped eroding. And these pictures illustrate some of that. Talking with Mike Cooper for the meeting, it confirmed my numbers. In a general sense, the bottom of the slope has eroded back perhaps 10 feet, but the top of the slope has eroded back perhaps 20 feet, and it's right near the parking lot that was recently constructed. The city has discussed our concerns about this property with Kansas Gas Service and the parent company. Ultimately, we've agreed that there needs to be a project moved forward to stabilize the bank, and we interviewed three engineering firms to get a sense of the scope of the problem and the scope of the solution. Since then, Kansas Gas has identified that they would be interested in a cost-sharing project with the City of Leavenworth to construct the repairs in a two-phase project. The first phase, which would be a design of the improvements, and the second phase would be construction of the agreed-upon designed improvements. The MOU covers both phases, but it only specific about Phase 1, which is the design of the improvements. And it is proposed that the city and Kansas Gas would share in the cost of the design on a 50-50 basis and selecting the most qualified firm from the firms that were interviewed earlier in the year. Kansas Gas is interested in moving ahead quickly on this, as is the city, so we can get the trail reopened and stabilize the bank so that the parking lot is not damaged. Funds for the design were budgeted this year's budget in anticipation that something was going to need to happen. It is quite a blessing to work with a large company that is interested in working with the local community to solve the problem. They have been very forthcoming to work with and had very frank discussions about the project and what needs to be done. To that end, the city staff recommends that the city commission approve our memorandum of understanding for the stabilization project, in which will allow staff to enter into negotiations with the selected engineering firm. You would next see this as an engineering agreement with approval, hopefully in a very short period of time, and then we would have a revised memorandum of understanding related to cost-sharing construction of the program. The city will be managing the project for both the city and Kansas Gas, and that was part of our negotiations to bring this MOU to you this evening.
So let me understand this correctly. This is not our land, this is Kansas Gas land.
That's correct.
But it's falling in, following our construction.
The Kansas Gas, they recognize that it's their property, but they said the city has probably had some influence on the degradation of the stream with the construction of the trail and the parking lot. We have some difference of opinion on that as to how great our influence was, but in the effort to move things forward, we agree that let's get a solution designed and see if we can solve our problems rather than spend our time pointing fingers at each other.
What's not budgeted at this point is the construction project that will probably come around CIP time. We don't know what it's going to be until the design's done. If you look at some of these pictures, the bank is essentially fill from over the last 100 years, so it's not necessarily soil and rock, it's construction fill. So once you hit pockets that begin to erode, you just start losing chunks to the hillside. So you're probably looking at large riprap, large rock placed in there, and some projects, but we just don't know the scope of the project until the design work is done.
Does Kansas Gas, did I understand correctly, that Kansas Gas is contributing towards the project as well as the design?
Yeah, and I don't want to say anything yet till we have that agreement, but I believe it'll even be a little more favorable than 50-50. We've, they've been really good to work with. We've met them numerous times, so I think we're going to get a little bit, a little better than 50-50 on the construction project, too.
Most has been North Bank, hasn't it, this gave away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can see where they could blame it on the parking lot, then, with that water shed.
Okay, we'll be looking forward to the memorandum, but I guess we have to have a motion on this.
I move that we accept the memorandum of understanding with Kansas Gas for the Three Mile Creek Bank stabilization design project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda, bids for refuse bags.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Commissioner, it is one of the highlights of our year is to bring the bids for refuse bags to the commission for review and approval. The refuse bags were delivered this last weekend. Mine arrived on my porch without incident, and we were very pleased with that. To my knowledge, that went well this last delivery period. However, as the city provides a roll of trash bags to each refuse customer twice per year, it is necessary to purchase another 23,000 rolls for an annual supply. We send out to our usual vendors and received two bids, the low bid being the highest bid we have ever received for refuse bags. I don't know that there is an exceptional explanation for that, but in the past, price swings have been tied to the economy. As the economy tends to become improved, the chemicals that go into the refuse bags are also chemicals that are used in all kinds of other manufacturing processes, and their costs fluctuate accordingly. So I look at it as a sign that the economy is getting better, by the fact that the trash bags are more expensive than we had anticipated. The cost of the budgeted amount for refuse bags is $120,100. This bid is slightly over that, and the difference can be absorbed in the refuse budget. And the city staff does recommend that the city commission award the trash bag bid to Jecor.
Okay. Yeah, it's gone up. Doesn't look like it ever went down, maybe a little bit, but mostly it's gone up over the years. What, any other, any comments or questions?
No. This is the same quality of bag that we've had the last couple of years, correct?
Yes, sir. It's the same supplier, and it should be rolls, and it should open on the ends.
That's good.
Right. I just wanted to make sure before I voted for it.
Okay, do I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the bid from Jecor Incorporated in amount of $116,610.
Wait. No, I think it was last year's figures.
It was, I'm sorry. $123.050.
Yeah, he's looking at this up here.
There you go.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 It's three to zero. Okay, next item, consider sole-source contract water pollution control division for belt filter press renovation.
Michael handled this item, which was a CIP item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a budgeted CIP item for replacement of the belt filler press at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the use to de-water the sludge. It's a giant press for the sludge, which is very watery. The consistency of applesauce is pressed between rollers, and the liquids run out and back in for further treatment in the plant, and the solids are emptied into a dump truck and hold up to the landfill. The belt filler press is inside this window where I've got the arrow pointing right here on the main building at the wastewater plant. Here, I have some pictures of the belt filler press and the sludge as it runs through this. It's about, it's two meters wide, occupies the entire width of the building. This particular belt filler press was installed in 1993 as part of the, one of the first of the major expansion of the treatment plant since the 1970s. It's operated typically five to seven hours per day, five days a week, and estimates are about 40,000 hours of use, and I forget, something approaching 4,000 tons per year times 20 something years is a big number, like 100,000 tons of sludge. So that's pretty impressive. It is, it is not broken, but it is showing signs of wear. We have replaced a few parts along the way, and staff approached the manufacturer, who has now different name two or three times down the line, about belt filler presses being repaired or replaced. And everyone said that they don't make them like they used to, and this is the last of the good ones.
That's encouraging.
And that if a rebuilt press should easily show another 25 years of service. The price of a new one, should you were to buy one, would be about $300,000 just for the press, plus somewhere 50 and $100,000 electrical plumbing modifications, because the building was designed to fit this press. The new ones are not designed to be the same. So in this case, I believe we're getting about 50 percent of the cost of a new press for, we expect to be another 25 years of service to the city. The work will take approximately two weeks if this is approved. They will order the parts, have them delivered, and in the meantime, the city staff will work to draw down all of the sludge. There's several little tricks you can do to create places in the treatment components to store sludge. You have the two main sludge holding tanks to draw those down. One should be empty, one should be nearly so. You can also manipulate sludge levels in the primary clarifiers to store additional sludge if you need to do so. So we do not expect there to be any permitting issues, but we will of course let KDEHE know that we are performing this work, as this is the only belt filler press that the city does have. Chuck Staples put together the price information after discussing the situation with the manufacturer. There were several other things that they suggested we should consider to add to the belt filler press, but we were of the opinion that we've done just fine without these new enhancements. We would like the new one to be just like the one that we have today, only with more modern bearings and roller components and such. So Chuck is here, if you have questions on the belt filler press and its operation. Staff does recommend that the city commission approve the sole source from Alpha Level for the rebuild of the belt filler press for $190,520.
And how long did you say this should last for?
Maybe two-week downtime and at least another 25 years of service.
That doesn't sound too bad for 25 years.
Replacing all of the components. Replacing all of the components with new components. We're really just keeping the framework of it.
All the movable.
Yes, and then a couple of years ago, we looked at large capital costs on the plant grounds. You remember, we did the roof last year on the main building? So this is the, this year's large capital maintenance item to keep the plant in good shape.
Okay. Twenty-five years sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions, staff? If not, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the, to consider the sole source contract water pollution control division for belt filter press renovation.
The cost not to exceed.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that one in. The cost not to exceed, we got it. Hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda is the first consideration for special use permit for a commercial communications tower on twenty-six twenty-two State Street.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, this is a special use permit request to allow a commercial communication tower at twenty-six twenty-two State Street. It's on the property occupied by the residential housing project known as the State Street Apartments. Property is owned residential multifamily. The proposed tower is one hundred and seventy feet tall. It is commissioned by T-Mobile with two additional spots for additional carriers to locate. Now, the proposal does include a fifty by fifty foot enclosed fence area at the base of the tower to enclose the standard ground equipment that goes along with the tower, such as this, and it will be accessed by a paved twelve-foot wide access drive off the west end of the existing parking lot that is there for the residential facility. The, the tower and the ground equipment are screened from the east and the west by landscaping that will be installed based on staff request, and then there is existing foliage, fairly dense tree growth to the north and the west of that, that will protect that view somewhat from the adjoining neighboring properties across the creek to the north and the west. The development regulations require that for each foot of tower height, there shall be a minimum setback of one point zero five foot from any property line. That would be a setback of one hundred and seventy-eight feet on all sides for this, and that is met on all sides for this. So the planning commission did hold a public hearing for this item on March sixth. There were no property owners that came and spoke at that time. At the conclusion of the public hearings, the planning commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
At least it's not in the historic district.
Well, I think we've proved on the last one, there's nothing we can do.
Nothing we can do anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
That's about the vote.
There's eighteen points what we can't do about it, then I guess there's not much we can do about it.
Put one in my backyard and everywhere else.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? If not, this is a consensus.
Consensus, yeah, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, second, or the next item is the first consideration ordinance to amend Appendix E of the City Code of Ordinance Development Regulations, Chapter ten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This chapter is relating to communication towers. This is our supplemental standards chapter, and as you all recall, we did discuss at a previous study session the recent state statute that was put in place, that, as Commissioner Rainey pointed out, listed about eighteen points of things that cities cannot consider, a number of which we were considering in our previous regulations, so we had to go through a fairly comprehensive overhaul of our regulations to get in line with what the state requires. We pretty much scrapped what we had. It wasn't really workable with any, in a way to modify it, so the Kansas League of Municipalities has done a pretty good job of compiling ordinances from other cities who've already gone through this process, so that was very helpful in looking through what's already been approved and put in place in other cities. So we got ours in line with what we feel like complies with the state statute while still giving us a little bit of leeway in terms of requiring screening and landscaping and that type of thing. We can still require the setback that we've always had, so trying to maintain some control while, while being in compliance with what the state's required of us. So we've got the proposed draft in here, part of the ordinance, and then I also included the current regulations, so you can kind of see the difference. We included a lot more definitions in this, most of which were outlined in the state statute, so just making sure that definitions we're looking at are in compliance with the state statute, and then making sure that we're not trying to consider or require any information from the applicants that the state says that we can't. So if you have any questions, I can try and answer those for you.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. I mean, I do, but I don't.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, this is a consensus item, so we have a consensus to move forward.
Yes.
All right, yes. Okay, did someone review the consent agenda?
I'll do it. Okay.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the claims from March eleventh, two thousand seventeen through March twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of nine hundred one thousand one hundred seventy-six and fifty-seven cents. Net amount for pay number six effective March seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred thousand, two fifty-four ninety-five. Police and fire pension is eleven thousand, four oh one thirty-four.
Two seconds.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 It's been passed. Are there any other items to come before the commission tonight?
Just a reminder that the April fourth study session is canceled and that our next meeting will be on Tuesday night, April eleventh. It'll be a regular meeting.
Okay.
And we'll be meeting with our legislators this week in Washington, DC, so wish us luck.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else?
No, I don't.
If not, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move. Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Dedekin.
Aye.
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 Okay, we adjourned.